All right, good evening. This is the February thirteenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have an extension. Jenny Kruger on Oakwood Drive in Manaville. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to request extension?
Yes.
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, we have an extension till the fourteenth of next year. All right, let's start it all.
Appeal number two thousand nineteen fifty-six, Fifteen Bay Avenue LLC, Aquaback, American Beach, Fifteen Bay Avenue, Aquaback, tax map number six hundred eighty-seven one forty-six, RA forty zoning. For an interpretation of chapter three oh one, section two twenty-two A, we're proposing to convert existing three hundred thirty-two point nine plus or minus square feet storage shed into a snack bar, which is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Mr. Cuddy, you have the floor.
Good evening. It's always nice to be first, thank you. As you know, this is something that we had discussed at an earlier meeting. It's a small unit that's been there since the early nineteen sixties. It's an accessory unit. We would like to use it as a snack bar, as a change of use. It's been used recently as a storage building. Apparently had been used as a dressing room. It's in the exact same location that it was in in the nineteen sixties, has never changed its position. We have had Mr. Ryder here, who apparently is a committee of one from the Aquaback Park homeowners. And who had some trouble with what we're proposing. And he's made up some hypotheticals in a letter to you. That we were gonna do all sorts of things, including serve liquor, that we were gonna have table service on the beach, and cabanas. This is simply a small smack snack bar that we're going to use for that purpose and that purpose only. I think that it's an appropriate use at the site. No one from Aquaback Park could even see it. Because the hotel or motel goes all the way to the water and it blocks it completely. So, this is an interior type use at the site. Mr. Pelton, who was the owner, is here with me tonight. He would also like to speak, but I believe that this is an appropriate use, it's a change of use. It's a de minimis use. It's gonna be used during the season. And again, just to serve food. But Mr. Pelton also would like to speak to you.
Please. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Yes, kindly state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Brent Pelton. And I'm the owner at Fifteen Bay Avenue. I reside at three two five West Forty-Fifth Street in New York. And thank you, Mr. Cuddy, and thank you, the board, for hearing us out on this application. This is a existing shed that's in the backyard of the hotel. As Mr. Ryder writes in his letter, the hotel has been shaped up considerably since we purchased it. We pride ourselves in that. We pride ourselves in doing everything that we can to get along with the neighbors. The neighbors have my cellphone number. If there's problems, they can contact me, they do contact me. We're not looking to cause a trouble at all. I really have been working hard to be a good neighbor. Last winter, the drains in the street weren't working. It's a private street. And it would cost too much for their budget to have them worked on. So, I paid for two-thirds of it. I'm not a member of the association, but I voluntarily paid dues because we used the road. In his letter, Mr. Ryder says that Mr. Cuddy reported there would be no alcohol. That is correct. That the appliances for the snack bar would be a microwave oven, that's correct. If you'd prefer, I could do a panini press or something, but I think the turbo chef microwave oven is just fine. And that the snack bar would be limited to hotel guests. That's correct. It's...I don't think that it should be an issue. I don't think that there would be any impact on the neighbors. And I think it would be a nice amenity for our guests. We have guests who come in from...I think last year, we had people from about twenty different countries who came and stayed with us. And we would love to be able to serve them a bite to eat over lunch at the snack bar. Mr. Ryder raises additional concerns about a neighboring lot and such, and it's just not an issue. It's not what's on the table here today, and there's no plans for something that I don't own. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. And I also think that there are neighbors who are supportive of the idea. Or who at least are happy with the changes that we've made at the hotel and wish us success in further improvements at the hotel.
Okay, well, let's see what South James Ford has to say.
So, you're saying under testimony that no alcohol?
Correct.
No alcohol and guests only?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
South James Ford? We sworn you in before, haven't we? Well, then, we're gonna do it right here. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Robert Kenny, forty-one Willow Street, Aquaback. Vice President of the Aquaback Association. And our real concern, I think, may have been answered here tonight. But there was, I think you'll admit, confusion as to whether there was going to be, or what was going to be, and when it was gonna take place. Our concern is that we have a very small enclave. There is...we do not allow parking in the streets at all. Our concern would be if there was additional patronage at the hotel, where would they park? And they can't park on our street. We clearly have signs up that say no. And it says, "Private community," et cetera. I think this question was approached by Mr. Pelton, and said, "Well, not all of his people come by car." Which may or may not be, but some people come with two cars. So, our point is only really, we do want to exist, we have made try to exist. We have really tried to get together with Mr. Pelton. For one reason or another, we haven't been able to do it. I think the last time we were here, we suggested that nothing further go on until we got together. But we haven't, at this point in time, unfortunately. And it's only because of schedules. So, what I really would...what came here to clarify was to make sure that there is no alcohol being served, number one. And my question to you would be, does this represent an additional... Something additional to the hotel itself? In other words, does it now become a restaurant? And if it did, if it did, wouldn't it need a different permission?
It's a snack stand, and it's only serving guests, so it's not going to increase the amount of people parking in your neighborhood, in your enclave, as you call it. So, there's no alcohol being served, you said that. And it's only serving guests, so there should not be any increase in existing parking.
Okay, that's very good to hear. But again, let's get back to the other question. Does it become a restaurant?
No.
No.
No, nobody's gonna...it's only for guests.
It's a snack stand.
It's a snack stand with a microwave.
Yeah.
I go to a restaurant, I buy, I order something, I pay for it?
It's not the definition of a restaurant.
Do you see the size of the building? Do you know the size of the buildings?
Yes.
I don't think it's a restaurant.
Well, no, I hope not. That's my point.
Twenty by sixteen.
I know the building. I've been...I've lived there for twenty-five years. I know enough about this whole place. Probably more than anybody in this place.
It doesn't match the definition of a restaurant. It's definitely a snack stand.
Definitely a snack stand, and definitely no alcohol.
And just serving guests, so there should not be any increase, any amount of vehicles being parked in your enclave.
Well, you know, when you have these non-conforming uses and structures, there are certain customary accessory uses that should be allowed. Like if you go in the lobby and there's a snack machine and, you know, that kind of stuff.
I understand.
So, they're just trying to cater to the people that are staying there.
That's fine.
At least that's my understanding, okay? My understanding.
It wasn't ours until this point, I have to tell you that.
Right, right.
At this point, at this juncture, I'm hearing that there is no problem whatsoever.
Okay.
Then that should be satisfied.
And you heard it from the horse's mouth, so?
Yeah.
I was about to say, who's the horse?
The winner.
No, I think so. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Okay, let's make this a reserved decision for the next meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before we go forward.
Sure.
If there's any written comments that could be provided in the next, say, five business days, I would recommend that.
Okay.
We have things in writing, and we know there are concerns that may come up.
Okay.
But I definitely would move to...
All right, so we'll leave it open for the next five days for written comments?
And then go to the next meeting.
Next meeting for a reserved decision.
Fair enough. It's fair enough.
Okay, so we...
I'm a one awesome neighbor of the...and the neighbor isn't too late to speak.
Go ahead. Have you been sworn in before?
No, I haven't, sorry.
Well, then swear it. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Say your name and your address.
Michael Ford, seventeen Locust Street in Aquaback, New York. I'm actually the treasurer of the homeowners association as well. So, when...based on what they said, I think there's the concern would be around...we have private roads, and it's... We did that for a reason, and it's a quiet neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. Thus far, the hotel's been great about having...the guests have been polite and quiet. And I haven't had any issues, having been out here for...since it was purchased by the current owners. One request I would make perhaps as a courtesy to the...there are about forty houses in the neighborhood. Would that...that would be that in addition to serving guests at the hotel, that they wouldn't turn away residents who are living there and at the beach and would enjoy a lobster roll or whatever else they'd be selling from the snack bar.
So, you want the facility to accommodate the residents?
If we're on the beach, if that's not an issue, then I just...
I'm sure they...if you showed your driver's license and proved that you were from the neighborhood, they'd not serve.
I don't think there'll be any interrogations if you slip over there and get a hot dog.
Just wanna make sure that if they said that it was only served to guests in the town that...
I'm sure they could slip you in.
Perfect.
Any other comment? All right. So, appeal number two thousand... Have you been sworn in? Yeah, you were sworn in this.
Twice.
Just name your name and your address.
Ray Ryder, eleven Locust Street. My letter was explicit to what my conversation was with Mr. Pelton. I'm pleased to see that he came tonight, and I'm pleased to see that there'll be no alcohol. And that was the whole issue from the get-go.
We knew that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
So, I move to have the appeal of two thousand nineteen dash fifty-six. It can be reserved decision for the twenty-seventh of February. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, twenty-seventh, we'll have a reserved decision, but I think everybody should be satisfied as to what's gonna go on there. And thank you, everyone, for showing up. All right, there you go, lady.
Appeal number two thousand nineteen zero zero five, Christopher and Kristen Donnelly, six sixty-eight Soundshore Road, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred seven three three, RA forty zoning. Variants is under relief from chapter two nineteen, section ten B. Where proposed additions are within the coastal erosion hazard area, which is not permitted. Chapter three oh one, section two twenty-two E, where proposed eastern side yard setback is nine point six feet and minimum required is ten feet. Proposed attached deck setbacks are nine point one and nine point six feet, and minimum required is ten feet. Proposed additions increase gross floor area within existing non-conforming side yard setbacks, representing an increase in degree of non-conformity.
Anyone new? Step up. And I forget, you are...
Rich Bosworth.
You sworn in last time.
Yes.
State your name and address, and you were at the planning board the other night, right?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Richard Bosworth, four eight two two zero, Route twenty-five in South Old. As you're aware, because I believe you were at the meeting as well last week.
I was.
Mr. Hoffman expressed some concerns for the planning board, which was brought up by the engineer, and they're being addressed at this time.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping...
According to the engineer, the town engineer, it's fine with him. He sees no problems up there.
Well, there are a couple of conditions that need to be met, which were test boards being done...
But as long as, what I'm saying is, as long as all the conditions are met?
Yes.
He sees no problems?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that we can get this resolved tonight.
Well, we'll see. Who else to be heard on this matter? Step up. And you were sworn in last meeting? Just state your name and your address, please.
Joseph Hoffman, four thirty-one Wolfville Road, Dix Hills. I'm representing my parents, who own the house next door to Venice, Denny's. So, I was two, was at the planning board the other day, and I was able to get a copy of the third...I think it's the third site plan and the floor plans for the house. So, if you remember, they're moving the house closer to our side. They also propose to have the main entrance to the house on that side. In addition, if you look at the distance between our house and their house, it's about maybe fifteen feet after it's moved. The distance between them and the house on the west is more than thirty feet apart. So, I don't understand why they would put the...you know, on the side that they're encroaching on, why would they put the main entrance to the house on that side? And again, it wasn't obvious until we saw the floor plans, which I had put a FOIL request in for last week. And again, I'm gonna...I'll be at the planning board next week, because I still have issues about the basement and the being so close to the cliff. The deck is...it looks like the deck is inches from the coastal erosion zone, the proposed porch.
Are you saying that the planning board didn't approve this thing?
Planning board did not. The planning board did not approve this last week.
And what are they waiting for?
They're waiting for the...I guess the engineer was supposed to contact the engineer for the town, and they were going to...had a bunch of things that they wanted to talk about.
And, Mr. Chairman, they were addressed?
Some of them were.
Okay, so...so, I'm looking at the survey here. It looks like the house, unless I'm looking at the wrong one. Which was the... So, I have a different...
There are several in this.
There are three site plans.
This is where I run the base, but I see the house was shifted over. So, you're saying it was twelve feet, and now it's at nine feet on this side?
It's fifteen right now. None of the sites show the house at where, as it exists now.
So...
Fifty feet of this.
So, we're talking about, I don't know, it seems like they shifted the house a little.
Bring it...
From the original one.
Should really be sixty feet wide.
But, I mean, come on. As the administrators, the planning board, they're the ones that were in part of the decision where it should go. Are you walking at where it's currently located now?
Yes.
And you want it pushed away from you to the other side?
No, so, right now, in the front, in the front, in the northeast corner, they're nine foot six, nine point six feet off the property line.
I see it.
At the southeast corner, the structure that's there now is, I think, more than fifteen feet off the property line.
Yeah, nine point one.
From the originals, the structure that's there now?
Proposed.
No, no, the house is there now. The house is...
The structure was built before zoning, okay?
Right.
So, that's irrelevant in my eyes. This permit has been vetted in many ways. They've been very patient. They went to the DEC. You've had all this time to deal with all the various departments.
This is...
You've been given plenty of rope.
This is the existing?
I think it would be unfair to not vote for this tomorrow. Honestly, I don't think moving a foot here, a foot back, not gonna make much of a difference in your life.
Well, it...so, yeah, so last time, you mentioned...
And I gave you the opportunity to do that.
But they also are moving...
I think you're just asking for way too much.
But they also are moving the existing house?
The...
They're moving it further, the proposed house is further away from the property line than the existing house.
No, it's closer. On the east side?
On the west side.
I'm on the east side.
You're on the east side, right.
East side. East side, right now, east side is nine point six feet on the northeast corner of the current structure and more than fifteen feet.
We're talking this much difference.
The house is...
Between fifteen feet, between fifteen feet and nine feet?
Yeah.
That's six, that's five and a half feet.
But what they're also doing is balancing it more between the property lines, the footprint of the house.
That, which is true, except that when you look at the distance between the two houses, the house to the west is almost thirty feet away. And our house is now gonna be fifteen feet.
So, what would make you happy?
If they flipped the...well, one of the things, we would flip the design of the floor plan, which would be to have the main entrance on the side that has the larger distance between homes. They put the...they put the main entrance in the center of the house. They have the bedrooms to the south, they have the living area and the kitchen to the north. So, they have a center entrance on the east side where the distance between the two houses is the least.
So, you're on the east side, correct?
I'm on the east side.
So, the existing, the closest point is twelve point one feet from the property line, the existing.
In the existing house.
In the existing house. And they're proposing nine point six feet from the property line, which is a...
Three.
A difference of three feet.
Right.
And the code allows ten feet.
Right.
Okay.
And what they're basically proposing is nine, is nine, is nine point one feet on the left and nine point five, nine point six feet on the right.
Right, so...
It's virtually centered in this...
So, what I was saying is, if you're going to allow them to move the house so that it's now almost parallel to the property line, all I would ask is that you consider moving the main entrance from that side of the house to the other side, where there's bigger distance between the two houses. The house, if you looked at the house to the...
Why didn't you raise this point last time?
Because I didn't have the plans.
How long has this been going on?
I guess a year, but I've been in touch with the town the whole time.
With whom?
With Ms. Collins and Mr. Flood.
Mr. Flood?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, you're fifteen feet from your property line?
No, I'm whatever, six, six feet.
Oh, wait a minute, you're...
He's on the west side, he's...
You're on the east side.
I'm on the east side.
But this shared property line, you're six feet from that property line.
Six feet from that property.
And he's saying he's gonna be nine point six feet from the property line.
Right.
So, he's further from the property line than you are.
Right.
That's all I have to hear, thank you.
But what I'm saying is, but there's fifteen feet on that side, there's over thirty feet on the other side. Why would they not put the main entrance on?
I think you've had ample opportunity to vet this process and to vet this permit.
Okay.
And I think that if we put it off another two weeks, you'll come in with something else. It's a continuous thing. I think you'll never be...
I think if you look at my original letter to you...
You'll never be happy.
Well, I only found out about the entrance on the side.
I can tell you'll never be happy.
Okay.
You're never gonna be happy.
No, I would.
They gave you the opportunity, but I think you're asking for a little too much now. So...
So, you still haven't addressed the...so, who's addressing the cliff issue? There is no cliff.
It's not our job to do that.
Planning board and...
Oh, so I'm...
Planning board is the permit administrator. Did you raise that at their meeting on the sixth?
I did. And I'm coming, I'm coming back. They, they, they're the engineer.
What did Stanley, the chairman, say?
Well, when I was speaking to the engineer, then he... He had no problem because their water's being drained into dry wells from the roof. You have any wells that your roof water goes into?
No. But my, again, my house was approved back in, so, in nineteen eighty-five.
You're complaining about the runoff.
But not the runoff from that roof, the runoff from the property itself. The property is higher in the back.
It's a flat piece of property.
No, it's not.
Wow.
It's not, but...
Look, they've been through this process. They went to the DEC. If you think that we're gonna ask them to move a couple of feet either way, or change the entrance after what they've been through, I don't, I think you're expecting a little too much, honestly. You really are. I think we've been more than fair to allow the process to be vetted. We've heard everybody's arguments. I don't think there are any other neighbors that are concerned. And again, the planning board has the ability to vote on this, as they're the permit administrator. So, I'm ready to move on this, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
Okay.
Let's have a reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Christopher and Kristen Donnelly, six six eight Soundshore Road. Zoning is RA forty, variances are relieved from chapter two nineteen, ten B. Where proposed additions are within the coastal zone area, which is not permitted. Chapter three oh one, twenty-two E, where the proposed eastern side yard setback is nine point six feet and the minimum required is ten feet. And the proposed attached deck setbacks are nine point one feet and nine point six feet and the minimum required is ten feet. And the proposed additions increase gross floor area within existing non-conforming side yard setbacks, representing an increase in the degree of non-conformity. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches amendments thereto, if that is filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mrs. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the appeal has been granted. All right, next up. Good night.
Making for your patience.
Appeal number two thousand nineteen fifty-five, Edith Walter Reyes, five fourteen St. John's Place, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred, one twenty-six, four thirty-eight, RA forty zoning. For a use variance and a relief from chapter three oh one, section eight, we're seeking to reestablish two-family use and one-family dwelling is permitted.
Folks here?
Anybody here to be heard on this matter?
Okay, next up.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this appeal be dismissed since lack of interest of the property and will file the appeal.
How many times have they not showed up?
Twice.
Second. Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm making a motion to dismiss this case.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, there you go, lady. Continue.
Appeal number two thousand twenty-one, Erin Rogers, fourteen fifty-one, North... Appeal number twenty twenty-one, Erin Rogers, fourteen fifty-one, North Country Road, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred fifty-four, one thirteen, RB eighty zoning, variances and a relief from chapter three oh one, section twenty-nine A one B, proposed side yard setback is fourteen point five feet and minimum required is twenty feet.
All right, the young lady, pull that down to you and state your name and your address, we saw you in last time, didn't we?
Yes, for a different matter.
Different one, though.
Yes.
You gotta swear, Eric.
Amy DeVito.
Throw me a curveball there, all right. Raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, state your name and your address.
Amy DeVito, I'm actually here on behalf of Erin Rogers Expediter Andrew Malguinera, uh, ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven.
Wait a minute. Okay, got it, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, my client is going to be applying for a rental permit to rent out her home and as such, we are legalizing the second-story deck and door on the side of the home, which creates an entryway to the, uh, second floor. Um, the, there was apparently a violation on this file, my client went to court in October. I believe the violation was cleared. Um, the, the second-story deck was erected, uh, we believe in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen and it was specifically to create access to the second floor. The interior staircase in the home is extremely narrow and my clients were having a hard time bringing items up to the second floor for storage. Uh, so that's why the, you know, uh, regular-sized staircase and doorway was, was installed. Um, my client has owned the home since two thousand and one. Uh, we are just five and a half feet short of the required setback, so we do feel that this is a de minimis request. The, there is a, a mixture of different-sized lots in the neighborhoods, both small and large. There's also a church right across the street and a fire, the fire department, uh, just a couple of parcels down. And we don't feel that this would create any negative impact on the neighborhood, um, or change the character of the neighborhood at all, it's clearly not an environmental issue, so we're here requesting from the board for approval so we could proceed with permits and the rental registration.
Is the owner here tonight?
I don't believe so, no.
So, tell me, what's upstairs?
It's a storage room, it's really just used for storage.
So there's no kitchens upstairs?
No, no kitchens.
You're under testimony?
I know, I have, I've never been in the home, so I can't...
Okay, that's what I wanna know.
But based on the floor plan, which I reviewed, which I could submit to the board right now, um, it is a storage room. It, it, on the plan, it calls for a slash bedroom. I believe that at sometimes, um, the owner may sleep up there when they're in town, they're from the city, um, which is why I questioned the draftsman why that was put on the plan that way and that's what he told me. So I could submit that to the board along with the picture of the staircase if I could approach.
I, I would rather, um, rather have the building inspector have access to the inside of the house.
Oh, absolutely. I, I believe he'll, that will be required as part of the rental, uh, inspection anyway. Clarissa, is that correct?
Let's hope that happens.
Rental goes through court enforcement, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay.
But I, I, I did do a rental, uh, permit in the town of Riverhead about a year ago and I do recall there was full access to the inside of the home.
When I submitted the rental permit, you have a full sketch of the house up and down.
Yes, I have that here today.
Going on in one kitchen.
One kitchen.
Nothing in the basement.
The basement is finished.
That has a separate access as well.
Yes, the basement is finished and that is reflected on the letter of pre-existing use from two thousand and one.
Okay.
I'll approach with you.
So there's no kitchen in the basement either?
No, not according to the floor plan, again, I cannot confirm nor deny.
But you have not been access to the house.
I have not been inside the house.
Okay.
The letter of pre-existing use states that is, uh, one and one-half-story frame single-family dwelling with enclosed front entry and finished basement room.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I've been living in Waiting River since nineteen ninety-one and always thought that that was a beautiful home across from a church.
Yeah, it's very cute.
But these are, these are not stamped plans, right?
No, those are drafted, just drafted, yep. And if we, if we need to submit a stamped copy, we can have a architect or engineer review.
I just wanna know what the intentions are, why do we need an exterior? But, I can't, I can't face it based on what could happen, I have to face it on what's currently there.
Right, well, from what I was explained, it, it was because, um, this is a, an older house and it has a very narrow, shallow staircase that leads up to this particular floor and it was just impossible to get things in and out of it.
Got you. I, I just wanna make sure the building inspector gets a look through the house.
Okay.
Say, they, if they're gonna get a rental permit, it's gonna be for one occupant.
That's correct.
The whole house.
That's correct.
Okay. Then we have no choice here.
Okay. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Okay, let's have a reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of, uh, appeal number twenty twenty zero zero one, Erin Rogers, fourteen fifty-one, North Country Road, Waiting River, uh, section tax map, map number six hundred five four one dash one three, RB eighty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section twenty-nine A, one B, where proposed side yard setback is fourteen point five feet and minimum required is twenty feet. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Ah, let's see, who do we have here? Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the appeal has been granted.
Thank you, good night.
All right, take care.
Appeal number twenty twenty-two, Rita Mulaney, ten Locust Street, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred eighty-seven, one forty-three, RB forty zoning for variances and a relief from chapter three oh one, section fifteen A one A, where existing shed is located in front yard, twenty-seven point two foot setback and no accessory structures are permitted in front yard.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Both of you state your name and your address.
I'm... Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Dr. Dominic Morielli and I'll be assisting, uh, Captain Mulaney.
Retired Captain Mulaney. Uh, Rita Mulaney, three fifteen Eighth Avenue in New York City, Manhattan.
Captain of what?
And my address is twenty, Highland Avenue, Head of the Harbor, New York.
Okay.
If I may, uh, let me just start by talking a little bit about Akabak. We heard some of the earlier testimony about the, the community and how it looks. I'd take it a, a couple of steps further. I would say it's a, an incredibly beautiful community in that it, it really represents what, uh, New England looks like. And it's, it has that charm, that seaside charm to it. So it, it is that kind of community. Um, this is nothing new that we're brought to, uh, ask you for this evening, uh, from point of view. This shed has been there since nineteen eighty-eight, as near as we can tell, and it's a little bit hard telling because, um, much of the documentation that was, that was sent in earlier was destroyed in the flood, the great flood and town hall. So we have some difficulties, uh, retrieving some of that data. Uh, but I would tell you this, um, the, um, again, it's not new and yet there are two hanging problems with it. One is the issue of, uh, having a, a secondary or ancillary building in the front yard. And the second issue is obviously that of not having a setback of fifty feet, all right? So let's address the first part. Uh, the idea of not having, uh, a, a building of this nature in the front yard. I'd like to give you a few...
Of the neighbors?
What's that?
Of the neighbors' properties?
No, I'm talking about the front yard.
I'm, that's what I'm talking about, but go ahead.
Okay. That's the shed, tell you more.
So if we would look at exhibit A, which is the shed itself that we're talking about, and you'll notice it's in the front yard. There are a couple of photos of that, one photo shows that, uh, from the roadside and you could see the twenty-seven, uh, feet where it's gravelled road, okay? And so the question is, why is that in the front yard? Well, the answer is somewhat convoluted, to be very honest with you, because that's really not the front yard anymore and you know this from many, many of the communities that have waterfront like this. What becomes the front yard is the waterfront piece. And if you look at some of those, uh, photos we took, I mean, they're absolut, absolutely a beautiful sight. And let me just suggest this, if we were to attempt to move that shed to what you would consider to be the backyard waterfront side, uh, we'd raise all kinds of, of fury with our neighbors, I mean, it's just, it, it is just too beautiful to put a shed on that side. So, and if you look, I, we took some shots, one is of the east view and the other is of the west view. I don't care how bad the weather is, it was raining when we took those shots. Uh, it's still absolutely gorgeous sight, so. So that's one of the reasons for that being, um, the flip. Instead of the backyard, it's, it's in the, the front yard, okay? Um, let's go through some of the uniqueness of this. Nobody wants that on the other side, so we're just, we would prefer if we could receive the variance and just let it be where it's been for the last thirty-two years, okay? Secondly, um, um, let's just talk about the community a little bit. Locust Street itself, I'm just gonna focus on Locust Street. That particular road is rather short. There are only twelve houses on the entire road, except if you count the last one, which is very confusing, that would make it thirteen. I say it's confusing because there's a split-rail fence that goes right across the road and quarters off this person's property. So they're actually, there could be thirteen. Of the thirteen houses or twelve houses, however you count them, nine have sheds in the front yard, okay? And I'm presuming they all have variances for this, but, and, and furthermore, those that don't have sheds, two of them have garages in the front yard that cannot accommodate a car of today's build. It just, they couldn't fit a car in them. So, really, almost every house there has the shed. Now, the other question is, why do you need this shed? Well, it's not only for the normal garden kinds of things. When you're on the beach, you can't put out your beach chairs in the morning and say, "I'm gonna leave them out for the rest of the summer." They have to be brought back in every day and all your equipment has to come back in. So where do you put it? You need a shed, okay? Um, I, let me just give you a, a couple of more things. Now, let's turn to the other part, the fifty-foot part. This gets even more interesting. This is a common dilemma in that entire, on that entire road. Houses just can't set, be setback fifty feet. Mr. Barnes is laughing because he and...
I know the area.
Oh, you and I went through it on my house, which is on Bay Harbor Woods.
I told you he was a resident.
My garage was three feet from the road and I had the same exact situation, so...
Do you no longer live here?
So, excuse me?
Do you no longer live here?
Ah, retirement brings strange things, now I am no longer here. I'm now in, uh, Head of the Harbor, but, but I come here every day. But anyway...
It's okay.
Of the... I just need to point out one other thing about the distances, this is really fascinating. Of the nine sheds, the average is between three and thirty-five feet from the road, okay? And it gets even more interesting. I, I went out with my little old golf meter, you know, I was gonna take distances from each house, but I got looked at rather strangely trying to do that, so I quickly put that away and I did guess the mitts, so please, I apologize.
You should've dropped the ball and taken a swing, you would've been all right.
Whoa, that was, that was, that was really interesting, very nice neighborhood, by the way, and give him the snack bar. Uh, anyway, um, the, the distances were interesting. Three of them, three of them were three feet or less from the road, okay? And that's counting the one on the end that's kind of strange, because again, it has that split rail, but that one is probably about a foot or so off the road, you know? My point, and I'm not gonna belabor it, um, there is a, a phenomena that happens because it's on waterfront. And this was done in nineteen twenty-nine, these, these, this area was developed and...
Doc, I don't wanna cut you short, but I think you've made your point.
Sir, that was an excellent presentation.
Is there anyone else, was anyone else in the audience to be heard on this matter?
Oh, I can't wait to hear this.
Are you positive or negative? Sit down.
Sit down.
End of story.
These are all the neighbors.
Thank you, Doctor, for your...
Thank you very much.
And what precinct were you in there, Cap?
Always at Manhattan South.
Manhattan South, okay.
She's a very modest person. Nine eleven, this lady was there and was there for a long time, but she's too modest to tell. She's truly a hero and doesn't say it.
Anyway, it was a good presentation.
Thank you very much.
We welcome you to our community and we're glad you're here and we wanna know if you're gonna be serving liquor.
Yes, it is, yes.
Sounds like we can't do it at the hotel. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you again.
Okay, I moved that the appeal of Rita Mulaney of ten Locust Street, variances are relieved from chapter three oh one, section fifteen A one A, where existing shed is located in the front yard, twenty-seven point two foot setback and no accessory structures are permitted in the front yard. Be approved in accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Do I have a second? Yes, we do.
Mrs. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Appeal has been granted, best of luck.
What time of cocktails? Okay, got it.
Meeting will be over in about twenty minutes. All right.
Can I say one other word?
Sure.
That lady is great. We know that. We're not gonna lose her.
We already, we already lost one good one and she's back in the sound booth. Take care, Doc.
Take care.
Everyone left, I can't follow those footsteps, you know? He was great.
Don't overkill him. Shoot.
I'll clear it.
Appeal number twenty twenty, number three, one fifty-three Eric's LLC, Fourth Street, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred thirty-three, four forty-two point one, RB eighty zoning for variances and a relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where existing lot is fourteen thousand seven hundred seventy-four square feet and minimum lot size required is eight thousand square feet. Where proposed front yard setback is thirty-one feet and minimum required is sixty feet. Where proposed rear yard setback is twenty feet from deck and minimum required is seventy-five feet. Where proposed side yard setback is twenty-seven point one feet and minimum required is thirty feet. And where proposed impervious surface coverage is sixteen point one percent and maximum humidity is fifty percent.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Monica Majewski, thirty Stoller Drive, East Quack, New York. Um, I was here, I think, in the summer, that house standing already in Waiting River, so, thank you for that. We asked for variances. So, there's, there's so many little lots there, you know, after the subdivision. This lot became RB zoning, um, when the new zoning went into effect and it was a single and separate way before, um, to my knowledge, before the subdivision, I think, happened to the lot next, uh, next to it in nineteen seventy-five. So it's zero point three four acres. And, ooh, I took a drive around the neighborhood today when I was taking the other photo and the neighborhood is called Wildwood Acres. And all you see is zero point three lots or less, uh, improved with single-family homes. So, I'm here today as the board for setback reliefs to allow my, I didn't say that I represent the builder, uh, my client to build about sixteen hundred square foot house there, single-story ranch style, which will fit into this land and will be very conducive to the neighborhood. We think the setbacks and the size of the house are reasonable and comparable to surrounding houses and the character of the fourth street. So that's all I have today. Do you have any questions? This was very boring.
It's not a problem, that's fine.
So, do they own the lot now?
Uh...
Or is it in contract?
Yes, in contract.
Okay.
The neighbor to the right owns the house.
Owns a house there?
Yes.
Okay. So, I see they use that as a parking lot.
Yes.
For various vehicles, I, would you be occupying the house, or you're building with spec?
I'm not, I, I, I live in the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, you're just here to listen, okay.
Are you, you for? Are you for or against?
No, you have to try. I, I love, I know a house has to be built there.
Okay, you have to come up and speak to the microphone.
Okay, well, wait, hold on, okay, you all finished, anything else to say, Monica?
So, so, it's in contract of sale?
Yes, uh...
And it's probably pending a building permit approval?
Right, and zoning board, of course, because of the variances.
All right, let's hear what they have to say.
All right, step up, please.
Please step up.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
My name is Avril, I live on Third Street, which is behind the house.
Right.
My house is way up on a bluff.
I see that.
And they're down there.
Yes.
I don't know how far they're going into that hill that's there, we're both on the hill, and if they go compromise that hill, my house might come down.
Have you had a chance to look at the survey?
I haven't seen any papers, it's first, I don't know anything about it.
Okay.
I know Ralph, who owns it, was trying to sell it.
No, I know Ralph.
Ralph, yeah, I'd love to have his VR back there, because he doesn't bother anyone.
So, do you have a survey showing the location of the house, uh?
Yes.
I don't know if it's in my pile, oh, here it is, okay. All right, so, if you wanna take a look at the survey, have you seen the survey?
No. No, I haven't seen it.
Would you like to come up here and take a look?
You wanna, I have pictures of the lot.
I was there.
Right there, okay.
Yeah, we all did.
I want you to look at this, I want you to tell me, do you feel comfortable with that being?
Right now, I don't.
Of course not, it's development, nobody likes development.
No, I know a house has to be built there sooner or later.
Not has to be, but it can be.
My problem is, I don't know.
This is your lot here.
Right, I'm behind it.
And there's a steep drop, and I understand that, there's twenty feet here, the house will be thirty-seven feet setback from the line.
Yes, but his deck is gonna be here, so this has to be dug out or something, and that's going into the hill.
Okay, and that's what you're concerned about?
Yes.
That being dug out?
We own both, we both own part of that hill, or the cliff, or whatever you wanna call it.
You can call it whatever you want, that's the property line.
He's going thirty-seven feet from the property line.
Yeah, but the deck is going, gonna be twenty feet, so, what is he gonna do here? He's gonna put a fence up, retaining wall?
I don't know, I don't know what he's gonna do.
I don't know either, that's why I'm here.
That doesn't mean you don't vote for it, or approve it, but what it means is that, and you can ask these questions, I don't know who the builder is, so, go back to the mic and address the, the board itself, since you've had a chance to look at it, and tell us what you're concerned about on the tape, on video.
What I'm concerned about, since I'm in the back of the house, and there's a cliff or whatever you wanna call it, we both own that cliff, and if you start digging into it, you could compromise a house that's on top of it.
Okay.
And they say it's gonna be twenty feet off the property line?
Well, the deck, the deck will be.
The deck will be.
The deck most likely will have sonotube, sir, which is not gonna disturb the soil greatly.
But he's probably twenty feet from the deck, he's gonna put a fence or something up, so...
We don't know that.
We don't know that, and we can't, but...
But the cliff goes along this whole street, it's not just
Yeah, we know, we were there.
You're telling me I can put a fence up?
He may, may not put a fence up, it may not be effective anyway, because you probably can still look down anyway if he puts a fence up.
That doesn't bother me whatsoever, the house doesn't bother me, it bothers me how far deep you go into the property, into the hill.
I understand that, you don't want him cutting into the back of your lot.
And you know she owns part of the property that she's gonna dig into, but, is that gonna
She's just a permit expediter.
I'm sorry. But what I'm saying is, I don't want my house to be compromised, because this guy decides to go in.
Reasonably speaking, the house is gonna be situated balanced between the property lines, as best as possible, if you look at the, at the side block.
Speak into the microphone, please.
You can't move it front, because it's already, how many feet are we asking?
Thirty-one feet from the front yard.
Right, so...
What'd you say?
Yeah, and, and the, the issue of a fence is, is not, is not before us, and it's their right to have a fence. Yeah, so, we're strictly looking at the setbacks.
Okay.
That's what we're addressing. Sure.
Will they be looking at this?
Well, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna ask for the builder to be here next meeting, and let him tell us, please, up to the microphone.
And let him explain to you how he proposes to do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And that's what we're gonna do.
Will you be able to produce the, the owner? I remember the filing. I wanna hear from the builder.
Hey, but, but either way, an architect or an engineer is going to sign off the plans.
I don't understand that, I worked with Nassau County Planning Board, too, and I don't mind the house being there.
Yeah.
Let me tell them that, but I just wanna protect my side of, you know, I don't compromise me.
We'll have the builder here next meeting.
What's the contractor's name, please?
It's Adrian, he's been here before.
Adrian?
Adrian Conyard.
Conyard?
Yeah.
Oh, here it is, okay, Adrian. Lives on Sandy Court. You have a question?
No, I just have, yeah, well, I
Microphone.
No, I don't, I just
Microphone.
She's got a question, if you could switch.
What questions you might have for him, maybe I know the answers.
How is he gonna excavate, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no. I think what they were asking my fellow board members was, if you could bring the builder in, and if you could just describe to, to the board here, what he, how he was gonna excavate the site, and
Well, it's very flat, so I don't think he's going to, um, do anything with it, you excavate it, you put foundation in, and you put a house up, it's pretty straightforward, it's
But I want him on the testimony.
Okay, okay, fine.
You're not gonna be here after they build the house.
I told him to come here tonight, but...
Well, if he came here, we would've had all the questions answered, and we wouldn't see you next meeting, so...
What's the next meeting date?
Twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so it's one, it's two, twenty-seven.
All right, let's hear a motion.
Who has the waiting? Okay, so...